I think so.
And you're recording?
Yeah, she said it.
Hi, Leslie.
How are you?
I'm okay.
Okay, we're being recorded.
I can hear you.
I didn't see anything in my calendar, but yeah.
Okay, so we are on.
We'll get started in just a minute. We're just gonna give another minute for folks to join us and get all of our technology set up and everything here, so. That is, that is up to all of you. You have a, you do have a Dr. Leggett hanging out behind you lurking behind you. She missed, she missed remote instruction, so she thought she'd go back to it.
It's good to keep up with these skills.
Yeah, for all of us. Yeah, we'll just give it another minute just for folks to join us and make sure we're all things working here, but it looks like it's, it looks good from our end. How does it seem from your end?
Perfect.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. So I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:32. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. We do have some folks here in the room with us, and then we do have folks that are joining us virtually as well. And the meeting tonight is, the priority is for the meeting to be held live in person. The, our previous practice of having remote meetings is no longer in play because of the end of the state of emergency, so our priority is for the meeting to be held here in person. Our superintendent is joining us remote today for the meeting, which is in accordance with the regulations since we do have our full board here in person to do voting and all and those things, but any updates or discussion that we need to have with Dr. Leggett will happen with her remote, so we will have time for public participation, and I'll go through what that will look like when we get to that part of the agenda. But I just wanted to remind folks that since the school public boards and public bodies are asked to meet in person again, should there be technology issues or something like that that comes up, the meeting will continue because we do have a quorum of the board here in person. Minutes are taken during the meeting that are available once they are approved, and there is a recording for what the technology can give us in that sense. So we will move forward to our first agenda item, which is approving the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda for tonight? So we'll need a vote to approve the agenda. Second, okay, so we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay. All right, so we will move to our public participation. In this forum, if you are here in the room with us, you're welcome to speak during public participation. We ask that you state your name and address before you do address the, the meeting. All of your comments should come to the Chair of the Board. If you are joining us virtually and you would like to participate, we ask that you use the Q and A or the chat feature. You can type your comments in there. As long as your name and your address are included in your comment, your comment will be read out loud. While we may not address each comment individually during public participation, we do try to make sure that we address comments as the board goes on in the agenda and does our work. But this really is a time for the public to have a chance to address the board, not necessarily for there to be a discussion on topics. So I think I know why most of our public who's here in the room with us is here, which is later on in our agenda. But if anyone here in the room would like to share something during public participation, please feel free to do so. Or anyone who's joining us virtually, please feel free to go ahead and be typing behind the scenes. And we'll just give it a minute or so here to see if anything comes in.
And Sydney, because you're co-host, you can see those chats coming in, is that correct?
Yes, I can.
And do we have anything virtually? Okay. All right, so we will move forward to the next part of our agenda, which is hearing from our student school board liaisons. I am not sure who's with us tonight, so there'll be a surprise. Sydney or Kristen?
So Ellen, Ellen Wilson-Home had a swim meet tonight, so we'll be wishing her luck in the pool. And I'm gonna move Seth Carl in, and he's gonna be joining us, so I'll be promoting him to panelist right now.
Perfect. And it was last month that we were missing stuff for soccer, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. And I think we should probably say a little something about that.
Yeah, we should. Our super involved student school board liaisons, we love it. All right. Hi, Seth.
Hello.
First of all, congratulations. We missed you last time, but you were, you were absent from our meeting for a very good reason, so.
Yeah. We are state champs for soccer now, so yeah. I think it was a playoff game that I had to miss for the last meeting. Or like, I had to miss the meeting for the playoff game. Yeah.
That is an excellent reason, so. Well, we'd love to hear from you, since we haven't heard from you in a couple months now, just how things are going so far. Any sort of differences or, you know, things that you've seen, especially if there's anything that's been noteworthy or surprising to you about how this year has gone so far, since we still are in a pretty different time? Or if there's anything else that you would, you know, like the board to address during your update?
Um, I think this year is pretty similar to last year in general, just besides the fact that like, we're not, like, the main priority is keeping us in school. Like, last year, I'd say the main priority was like keeping us safe. Well, that is still like a big priority, like, they wanna make sure that, like, we can all be at school learning rather than, like, doing it remotely or in a hybrid situation, so I think, like, that's a little bit of a change, but like, we were already in school for like, at least half of last year. But like, this year, there's been no remote days, so far at least, and I think everyone's doing like a good job just wearing their masks at all times and being safe. So I think it's going pretty well.
Good. Any questions from the board?
Are most kids vaccinated now, Seth?
Um, I, I think, I think most kids are. I know that, like, there's some younger kids who, um, you know, like, their parents or whatever don't want them to be some, but I think that's fairly rare. I think most people are vaccinated in high school, though I don't know, like, just how high that is, but, um, I, I, I'd say that the majority of people definitely are. And I know, like, there's, oh, there's a school trip, like, school trips are allowed to happen this year, so I think people are like, there's like a plan in the spring to go to another country with a group of kids, so I think, um, we'll, we'll see how that goes, but it, it seems pretty promising, and also like, this, um, winter break, I'm on the Nordic ski team, and I'll be going up to Craftsbury and be skiing there, like, a, a group of, I don't know, forty of us or so. And that, one of the requirements is that you're vaccinated, so like, obviously, a large portion of us are, if, like, that large of, that large group within the team can go and participate in this, so just based off that, I'd say that a lot of the schools vaccinated.
So I had a question for you. Much later on in our agenda today, we're gonna be starting to talk about, we're taking on sort of a revamp of our website, of the, the school and the district's website. And I would just love to hear from you from a student perspective, do you use your school's website? What do you use on it? What are the resources that you think are helpful to have in terms of website-based resources? And if you can think back, what might have been helpful to have, even when you were, you know, an elementary student?
Um, well, the thing I like about your website in comparison to maybe Levidence is the fact that you can find the calendar pretty easily. You just go to the bottom, and it's right there. Sometimes I'm like, ah, where do I find the school calendar? And it gets kind of complicated, but yours is pretty accessible, so I like that. But I guess, I don't know, something just at the high school, there's like a lot of library resources, and I'm not sure how many of those you guys have on your site, but just making sure those are easy for the kids to find when, when they use them. Besides that, um, I don't really think I use the site as a student for much else. Because everything's like on classroom or being emailed to me. So I, I couldn't really think of any other reason for a student to really need to use the site. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you. That's why you're here. You're here to give us your opinion.
I mean, unless you guys are like Power School or whatnot, I'm not sure. Do, do they do that?
Power School.
We actually just left Power School. We use Alma, which is like a similar type thing.
Yeah, but yeah, you probably don't want the kids looking at their almost, that's kind of young to be like, so focused on grades, so. That probably doesn't matter as much.
Any other questions from the board? Are you looking forward to your winter break?
Yeah, I am.
Good. All right, well, thank you.
I think we might be able to see some, some family this year, you know, since stuff is a little bit better than last year, so.
Good. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. We really appreciate it. You know, as always, you're welcome to stick around, and you're welcome to stick around for several more agenda items if you wanted to hear us talk about a website survey, but I imagine you have other important things that you have to get back to tonight, so we appreciate hearing from you, and good luck with the end of this year and have a good holiday.
All right, thank you.
Bye, Seth.
Okay, so our next item on our agenda is honoring, our next honoring our team. So this is something that we've been able to do for the last three meetings, where we've been able to recognize and honor different members of our school team here for really just going above and beyond over the course of the last year, going on two years. And so tonight, we are really excited to have the chance to recognize our food service and our custodians. And I'm so thrilled that so many of you are here. Thank you. And so Sydney, Kristen, Brenda, I'm not sure who wants to jump in and, and do the formal and official recognizing.
I think we all want to.
I guess because I'm present, I will, I'll start, but you pretty much said the first few things I was going to say, that we get to honor our custodians and our food service people, and how awesome it is, how many of you are here. And honestly, you know, I don't think you all get the credit on a day-to-day basis for everything you do. You are here, you're our, our, like, frontline workers. You've made sure the building is clean and kids get fed, and we're all healthy every single day, and you know, with, except for days maybe that you were sick, you haven't missed a day. So we so appreciate everything you do. Thank you for being here.
And I'm just gonna really quickly.
And I think Sydney was gonna say something, Brenda.
Okay.
I'll wait until Brenda's finished with the gifts.
I'm glad that owl cut on, and now they can, folks can see, can see who are handing things to. Sydney, you're on.
So I'm just gonna quickly share my screen, so for all of you, if you can kind of turn towards me for a second. What I've been thinking about when I think about our facilities and our food service staff is we often talk about Maslow's hierarchy in schools and, you know, how we actually get kids and people to where they need to be. And I was looking at this, and I was thinking, you are quite literally our foundation of everything that we need, so when we can give kids safety, and when we can give them security, and when we can feed them and give them the comfort that they have during the day, when we give them a healthy and warm place to be, and when we can provide all of those things, and when all of you do that, not just with that basic foundation, but when you also give that foundation with the love that I know that you give to the kids every day and how much you care about them. It's just an absolutely incredible foundation for our school. And one of the things that I just wanted to say, since of honoring the incredible work, especially that you've all done through the pandemic, is, you know, I think, like Mrs. Reed was saying, you did so many things that so many people don't even know about. And when I think of Mrs. Bailey and the food service team, not just delivering to classrooms and for snacks and lunches last year, but delivering to people's homes and finding ways to pack up food and get food to every home and grant them for a child who needed it. And then when I think of our facilities crew at that, you know, quite concerning moment in March of 2020, when the rest of us bugged out, quite literally, you stayed here. When we still didn't know a lot about the virus and what was happening, and you stayed here to clean and sanitize and disinfect the entire building and make sure that everything could be ready whenever we are ready to come back, so your work is absolutely admirable, and I credit every smooth day that we have to all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. We, the board, you know, echoes everything that Kristen and Sydney have said. And we just really appreciate you and what you're, like I said, we, our students would not be able to be in the building without the work that you all do, so it really is foundational to everything that we do. And just so you know, at the end of our presentation of honoring you, one of the ways that we honor you is we make it okay for you to leave whenever you want to leave. So we honor you by not making you stay for the whole agenda if you don't want to. You're welcome to. We love to have folks stay. But we also know that you are here late and up early and all of those things, and so if so if, if and when at any point during the rest of our chatting here, you wanted to slip right out, we, we take no offense to that whatsoever. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. I hope you all.
Okay, so our next agenda item is an update on our COVID protocols. We Sydney and I in our pre-board meeting felt like this was a good chance for us to sort of check in, see a little bit of a reminder of what the protocols are that the school is following. This also came out of the last progress monitoring committee meeting. So there was more discussion at the last progress monitoring committee meeting about sort of re-upping and revisiting some of those protocols. And so that's where this agenda item comes from. Number one, I think it's really just good timing after so many months of being in school to revisit them and make sure that we're all still aware of what we're doing. But we're also in a situation where we need to be realistic about rising numbers, variants, all of those increased risks, and is what we have appropriate, sufficient, doing what it needs to do moving forward. So that's where this, the intention of this agenda item comes from. And it looks like Sydney had something for us.
Yeah, I do. Now, I know that this is up on the screen, but I'm not sure if it's up on Zoom for everybody. Is it also on Zoom? If somebody who's watching from home, if you could tell me in chat if it's up on Zoom at home, that would help me out a lot.
It's on my screen, so I would assume that means.
Okay, thank you, Becca. It's there. Okay.
Is it bigger on this screen?
No, this very first slide is not intended to be read, so I didn't worry about the blurriness, but I wanted to put it up there just because we're, we're going to generally be referring to those Swiss cheese layers that we continually talk about with, with our COVID protocols. So what we have is our current GVS protocols is we currently have in place our three-to-six-foot distancing, lunch at six feet, and snacking classrooms, universal indoor masking and outdoor masking optional, our hand hygiene. We have surveillance testing. Right now, we have about fifty percent of our student and staff population signed up for our pool testing, which is great. And the more the merrier. It's also not too late to sign up if anyone is still interested. We are doing symptomatic testing for kids in that surveillance testing program who show symptoms while at school. We have a limited campus and limited field trips depending on where kids are going. We continue to have cleaning and disinfecting, and disinfecting routines for high-touch surfaces. And we, even though it's winter, we're still continuing to maximize our outdoor space and time as much as possible. So those are the biggies. Our progress monitoring committee met again last week, and some of the big concerns were, do we need to consider any adjustments at this point specifically concerning the current surge of cases in New Hampshire? The new variant, and I, I didn't specifically name Omicron because it's so new, but Delta. Delta still is playing a huge role in the transmission rate that wasn't specifically taken into consideration as much when we were creating our protocols, and the fact that we're at holiday travel and gathering time. So those were the big things that we wanted to bring, that group wanted to bring to the board's attention to see if any adjustments in our protocols from previous slides might be warranted at this time.
We have information as to, well, I'm not sure what can be shared or not, but have we had many cases of COVID within GVS?
So in the last two weeks, we've had four GVS standards. In the last two weeks, we've had our, our own mini surge or spike. I don't even like using those words, burst, I don't know what you wanna call it, but for GVS standards, we, we have had a rise in cases. So over the last two weeks, we had seven cases, two staff and five students positive. And by GVS standards, that's high for us. So on the one hand, that's high for us. On the other hand, it has not been defined specifically as a cluster or an outbreak, which are the definitions used by the state to show that there's in-school transmission specifically. So so the cases most, they are most likely a reflection of just what we're seeing around the state is that the state has the highest number of COVID cases and hospitalizations that it's had since the beginning of the pandemic. We know that the Delta variant is is much more transmissible than what we've seen before. And it's most likely a reflection of that more than actual cases being transmitted in school. That's, you know, to be completely transparent, we never know if it could be transmitted in school. Of course, that's always a possibility. But when they define, when DHHS defines a cluster or an outbreak, that's the way that they define an identification of the potential of in-school transmission, and we haven't had those yet.
And do we also know, or are we allowed to know, are these breakthrough cases? Or are these unvaccinated cases?
Well, the kids wouldn't have been vaccinated yet. It's still too soon for them to be considered fully vaccinated. The staff members are vaccinated.
I noticed that the, the daily screening wasn't on your list of protocols. So did that daily screening go by the boards beginning of the year? Yeah, that's what I thought. I don't know that, whether that would add to anything to bring that back.
No, I think it was proven to be pretty effective.
Yeah, and, and what Sydney's saying is we don't yet know if, and it doesn't appear to be that transmission is happening in school, so. Yeah.
And a big part of that was our taking temperatures in the morning, and once it got cold last year, the thermometers weren't working, so.
And I think there was maybe, I think Mrs. Islander may have told me there was only actually one student that we found with a fever that we sent home through that, through the entire year. So that didn't prove to be highly effective. What we found through the daily screening with the app was basically that parents would be doing it anyway with or without the app. Parents who would be doing it are doing it, and parents who wouldn't be doing it, the, the app itself didn't make that difference. I'm sorry, I don't know if you lost me or if I need to be.
We had a door, door closing, door opening.
Oh, okay. So one of the things that came up at progress monitoring meeting is, you know, should, when we talk specifically about should we be doing anything else, is some of the staff members had been concerned about outdoors since outdoor masking is currently optional. While we're in this current surge in New Hampshire, and our kids are mostly not yet considered fully vaccinated, and we have holiday travels and gatherings, would it, would the board want to entertain the idea of looking into adding universal outdoor masking while this is all happening?
There was a, a really good conversation in the progress monitoring committee about, especially at younger grades, especially in those age groups that are not yet eligible for vaccination. A lot of what's developmentally appropriate play brings them very close together. So two young kids in a sandbox together are going to be within three feet of each other, potentially for an extended period of time. And, and in that situation, they aren't necessarily wearing a mask. And so that was a And so that was a, something that was brought forward by the staff as a question. You know, if we're, if we're putting these, these layers in place, is that one that the board should consider? Along, and they also brought up, you know, small group instruction and just being aware of the distancing in the cafeteria. So some of those distancing times. And, and we did talk about how we did know that the move from six feet to three feet, well, you know what? It was six feet. It was more realistically like three feet. When you go to three feet, more realistically, they're getting closer than three feet. And so just knowing that, and is there something, is there additional need for action at this time? So the progress monitoring committee asked that to be brought forward to the board.
How difficult would it be to encourage masking outside? And we've been happy to give them mask breaks, but is this going to keep them more safe? Or is it going to be more of a hindrance?
I just don't think we have, I mean, any evidence, even with Delta, that outside exposure is like a thing that is like a major consideration. I just think it would be really daunting for the kids. It makes me feel actually a little
Thinking when it gets really cold, it's going to be wet and slimy.
And you know, the kids are so resilient and so wonderful, but I feel like that is like a really big psychological moment for them where
Yeah, to get a break, I think.
To be completely honest, I think adults have a harder time with it than kids. It really doesn't faze them at all. In fact, a large percentage wear them anyway. And I'm not saying yea or nay for the outside masking. I'm not sure the evidence is there. I have no, I don't know. I don't have enough knowledge in it. But I can say the kids are super used to the masks and lots of them wear outside. And in fact, lots of us, including the little people, are finding it much warmer outside. But they really are, I don't think that the mask caused for most kids any ill feelings.
I think it might be a different situation if we, we knew there was transmission within the school, but the fact that these are cases that have been contracted outside. I think I'm in favor of keeping the outside masking optional.
I had a very similar thought, Christine.
Yeah.
We were, the last progress monitoring committee meeting happened a, a day of pool testing. And so we'd had the conversation of, depending on how the pool test comes back tomorrow, you know, that may be a very different conversation. I think we're sort of like on, at this point with cases, the way that they are and numbers moving the way they are, we are again sort of on that like treadmill of like, okay, every couple of weeks, we're poised to have to act again.
And I just feel like when they're outside, how great for them to see each other laughing and smiling and be kids that can have a respite from this. I, I would be in support at this point, knowing what we know to keep, keep masks optional outside if some choose to wear them.
Any other thoughts or conversations specifically about masking? What I'm hearing is that the board is comfortable keeping that particular protocol in place as is right now? Okay. Are there other protocols from that list that folks would like to discuss or revisit or look at tonight?
Let me pull it up again, so everybody can see it.
I will speak as a parent who was very grateful to have the symptomatic testing option with Karen. It's very smooth and it's incredible. And I'm deeply grateful that she is willing to offer that and to do that.
Same.
I was going to say something about that, the testing. I, I think it's wonderful that we're able to do that. Actually, how is the supply of tests?
Right now, we're still
So far, so good.
That's wonderful.
I feel like this gives kids and staff a feeling of empowerment too, to say, I can be part of the data of what's going on in our school. And I think this is great.
Just my own knowledge base, the symptomatic testing, the rapid tests. What's the rationale by not being, I mean, you get a positive? And my understanding is we, you can't test that with a PCR. You have to quarantine for the 10 days. What's, what's the rationale for not allowing the PCR to get you out of the protocol if your PCR comes back negative?
That was the guidance we got from CDC or the Department of Health and Medicine.
From DHHS.
Yeah. Okay. And it was, and the same thing was, we, that question had come up in progress monitoring and the, the medical folks who are on the committee said, it's, they, they see it almost like a pregnancy test. Once you get a positive, you have to assume you're positive.
Until you get a real test, then you know either way. I, I guess that would be my
I think, I think they see that as a real test.
If I could just clarify a little bit, if you look at the, if you look at the percentages of false positives, false negatives with both antigens and PCRs, depending on when the test is taken and depending on the course of the virus, it, it's not worth parsing all of that out. So if you get any kind of a positive, you treat it as a positive.
Yeah, that, and that was pretty, I would, I would say it was across the board from all of the sources that this protocol was developed through, was across the board to, to have that in place. Yeah, when, as we developed the, the, you know, that, the, for New Hampshire and then, you know, and looking at the, you know, the, for the group that put that together, all of the medical folks that were involved in that, that was the guidance.
Is there any testing, is it after the 10 days, you need to run a test? Or we just 10 days and you're good to go?
After the 10 days.
Assuming you're asymptomatic, I assume.
Right. So you have to be, you have to be cleared of symptoms in 10 days. But basically, if you did a PCR test, it could be up to 90 days that you would test positive because the PCR test is going to still find COVID in your system. The antigen test might actually look for active infection. But, you know, so that could at some point turn negative. But if you're going for a PCR test at three months up to, after you've had COVID, it could still be positive.
Based on the notes, it seems like there's still a lot of, for lack of a better way to say it, like tension in the system around surveillance testing and symptomatic testing. And parents who, for their own reasons, are not comfortable being in the pool testing, but who feel that's maybe less equitable, that we can't make it available to everyone. I think, I'm just curious if either you being the board member there or Cindy or Kristen want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, we had a really good progress monitoring committee where we talked about, a lot about that. And the, the, one of the thoughts in the development of the symptomatic testing protocol, because it is something that's entirely optional. One of the thoughts behind how that protocol was developed was to offer a benefit to families who enroll in the pool testing as a way of increasing our pool testing numbers. And knowing that in the, 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 the day-to-day sort of practical, as it's implemented in pool testing, you know, we've heard from Karen, you know, that, you know, if there's kids who are absent or if there's kids who are just having a hard day and can't pick their nose with the swab, or if, you know, if they refuse, you know, those are, it's, no one is ever forced to do the pool testing. You know, and the kids are doing it themselves. So it's a pretty, it's, you know, it's, it's a kind of an empowered, like a self-test that they do on themselves, excuse me. And so using that symptomatic protocol and knowing that we had a limited supply of those tests, and there was a very good conversation amongst the, the committee about just sort of like the, the reality of why that protocol was put into place. And knowing that there are options for folks. The, the symptomatic testing at the school is only offered if Karen has time and there are tests available. And there are other testing options in the area. So if it's, if that was the only option to do a symptomatic test, you know, that would be a very different approach and conversation. But knowing that it's one of many options for folks in the area was part of, of that conversation too. And Sydney or Kristen, I don't know if you have had anything else from that conversation that you would?
I think that summarized it.
Um, I would just add, as we're sort of wrapping up our conversation about the COVID protocols is, I mentioned this earlier, you know, that we're sort of back in this cycle of like every couple of weeks, like, okay, is, where, where do we stand? Especially as we get the pool testing and as we look at numbers, you know, and if we ever are in the position where there's a reason to believe there's been transmission within the school. Just putting a reminder out to the board that there could be situations where we would need to meet in an emergent manner. And, and under our definitions, emergency doesn't necessarily mean like emergency red flashing lights. It just means the board meeting outside of our normal meeting schedule. So, you know, it's always, I think it's good to sort of remember or keep, keep an eye on your email and, and know that as we look at some of these things, if, if we did see something where like a cluster or an outbreak happened, or if we had a large number of pools come back positive or something like that, we'd maybe in a situation where either myself or Cindy would feel that the board needed to meet, emergency meeting, so. All right, anything else from that?
Just maybe before we get off this topic, has there been any further discussion about the, the Department of Education's prohibition of move to remote learning if a school district feels that's appropriate?
So it's interesting that they had their hearing on it in November and they are supposed to, they were supposed to have it on their agenda for an official vote this Thursday. And I looked at the state board agenda and it's not on the agenda. So I checked with the superintendent's association to ask what happened to it and nobody knows. They expected it to be there, but it isn't. So my guess is maybe there's some committee that's still reviewing it at this point.
Maybe because of the numbers in New Hampshire, they've decided we better back off this.
That would be great if somebody came to that logical conclusion.
Like the situation with the funding?
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't mean that. I'll take it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to our next agenda item. The RFP selection for the landscape architect and playground designer. So we have two, Cindy sent through in a separate set of documents to the board. We have two RFPs and then we also have a summary of the playground committee's feedback on those.
So I'm just going to briefly say, I don't think we can go wrong with, with our top two. We have two wonderful, top two bids that are in from the playground committee recommending Ron King Natural Playgrounds and also SE Group. Ron King is located in Concord, New Hampshire, and SE Group is out of Burlington, Vermont. They are both highly experienced. They both rang true to what Grantham and GBS would be looking for in terms of a playground design. Lots of pros and cons, you know, balancing out, but these two definitely rose to the top. And I can answer any questions that you have about them, but I thought that you would need some time to talk as a board before we choose this. Just to clarify for anybody who's listening in, first of all, this is a really exciting decision because this is choosing our partner. And this partner is going to be designing with the community, with all of you and with our kids and with our staff of what our GBS grounds renovation and playground project is actually going to look like and become. So it's a really exciting step. And then secondly, this phase of the project is strictly for the design. This is not getting into any kind of construction bids or anything like that. So this is just for the landscape architect design firm. And what kind of questions do you have for me?
One question I had was, did the playground committee get in touch with any of the sites where these contractors have previously done projects?
Yes, so they both come highly recommended.
Okay.
Cindy, as I was reading both of the reports, which of them would incorporate more flexibility with the design? It sounded like one was going to be much more nature focused. And I, I'm getting the impression that we want to see a combination of nature and, you know, places for soccer fields or other types of things. And then I thought about the drainage, is that going to be taken care of no matter what design? We're going to be able to use it in the winter?
Yep. So that's number one priority. So both places have been to the site, they've done a site visit and they both recognize the drainage issue is, is the number one priority so that kids can access the playground all year round. So I don't have any hesitation with either of them. I think what you're probably talking about is that the Ron King Natural Playgrounds really has a focus on natural playgrounds and natural playground elements. So if we wanted any traditional equipment, if we wanted swings, if we wanted any kind of structures or anything like that, he would leave a space in his design for it, but we would have to do that part separately. Because his, his focus is on strictly natural playgrounds incorporating, I mean, he'll do slides and things and rope structures incorporating on a hill and tunnels. But he is not going to do anything except leave a space for any, any structures or traditional equipment.
So that would be an additional expense if we need, if we want
But we don't know if it would be additional. It would just be an additional piece of, of the puzzle that we would coordinate. I did want to speak a little bit to the price because on our playground committee, some people were talking about a price difference between the two because there's about a $10,000 price difference between the two. When I was really pretty going into more detail in each bid before tonight, I really think that the price difference is actually a wash. I think they're just about the same. Because with Ron King Natural Playgrounds, if you'll note in one section of his bid, we would have to, in addition to the fee that's listed, pay him $150 an hour. That's his rate. And we would also have to take his design and hire a CAD engineer to put it into CAD to get the final plans because he doesn't do that part of it. So between those two things, that's going to make up for the $10,000 difference. So I, in my opinion, they're equally priced.
So I have some experience with the SE Group in the past, not with obviously playground constructions. But, you know, personally, I found them super responsive, super professional. One of the things I like about the SE Group, and again, I'm not overly familiar with Ron King, but SE Group is a little bigger of an organization. They do have a lot of resources to draw upon, you know, if they get in here and find something that is unexpected. They do a lot of civil design work for various companies I've worked with before. So, and I have found them super attentive in that regard.
It sounds like from your report, Sydney, we may have something unexpected with the, the septic and leach already.
So I'm, well, first of all, I'm incredibly thankful that we had some kind of good luck that we were able to get the site survey going before it was covered in snow and done for the year. They were out there today. So thank, very thankful for that. But we we, you know, as, as we mentioned before, in addition to the site survey, we've had really big concerns with this septic. And so um many thanks to Mr. Campo, who worked with Stern Septic to go out and have a camera go through and figure out what was really going on down there. I am extremely thankful that he did because of a couple of things. One, we have some very good news with our septic, which is um it looks like we can probably get another 10 or 20 years out of it. So um we're going to do as little with the septic as possible in this design, which is gonna save us money and that's a good thing. Um, a little bit of the not so good news is that we found a um a pipe that goes under the building and there's really nothing that we can do about it. That's just a, at a really kind of drawn out U. It's like a really extended U trap that goes under the building and it will at some point cause us problems, but at least we know about it now and we can try and flush it out as much as we can, but someday that's gonna be an issue. Um, that would actually cause us to, you know, dig up the floor of the school. So let's hope that that can be proactively taken care of for a long time. And then uh the third thing is that the um, the plans that are the official plans for the septic system do not at all match what is actually there. So um for that, I'm incredibly thankful because the septic lines and the junctures and where the leach fields are don't match the plans that we have. And if we had at any time started building based on the official plans we have, we would have been in a lot of trouble. So again, thank you very much to Mr. Campo and to Stern. So now with that, in addition to the site survey, we're gonna have a really comprehensive, really accurate map of what we're working with.
Uh, one question I had um for both of the respondents is did they, uh, did the committee speak with them all at, at all about maintenance costs once the project is completed?
No, mm-mm. We didn't get into that. That would, this is just for the design.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I would assume, maybe I'm assuming incorrectly, but I would assume that maintenance kind of things would come when we get more into the construction bit.
Yeah, okay. And the design of it, like the actual?
This is the design and the engineering and the plans and the permits and those kinds of things would be happening at this pace.
But I was just looking at the photographs and you know, there's, there's trees, there's borders, there's um lawns, um you know, like wood trips or some, in some areas um and just, you know, that kind of thing is
Yep.
It's gonna take wear and tear and.
Yeah, I, I mean, at this point, you know, whoever we select during the actual design phase itself is when we incorporate
Yeah.
the low maintenance, this is what we're looking for.
Right.
Yeah.
That kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. One of the references today um that I was talking to, because I was doing some final checking today, made me really laugh because he said, make sure this is really kid focused because it's, you're gonna involve the community and it's gonna be great, but the kids really don't care if it's really pretty ornamental grass. Just remember that. I was like, okay, I'll remember that. So Christine, now I understand what you're saying about the maintenance. So starting right up front, you know, in the design, we can start to control what the long-term maintenance will be.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just thinking, Sydney, when you said we have another 10 years or 20 in the septic, um, is this design going to be including looking at potentially if in 10 years that has to be replaced, are we gonna have to redo the playground again?
I think we'll have to talk about that in the design, but you know, that's all gonna depend on um, you know, what can be built around and near our leach fields and where future leach fields might be able to go. And that's above my expertise.
Sydney, were they saying that the, the leach field had another 10 or 20 years or the, the actual septic tank itself?
They tested the soil, so I think they were looking at the leach field.
Okay.
Any idea about availability of either group? Are they both ready to go?
Yeah, I confirmed with both of them because we're on a really tight timeline. Um, and I did confirm that they would both be ready to go if, you know, if they're chosen, so. Um, I think they were a little surprised by the tight timeline, but they both know what it is and they've recognized that. And um I think you can see at least in one of the beds that they actually put our timeline in it.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we do.
We are deciding tonight. Yeah, you are deciding tonight.
What, what do you folks?
I appreciate Ed. I, I like, and it now was echoed in one of the comments, what you said about the um SE groups having more resources and more connection to, to resources available to them. Just it, it seems like it might be for those things that come up because we know that it's gonna be other unexpected things that are gonna come up as they always do.
Yeah.
Um, and it seems like, you know, that's a, that would be a plus in their favor to me. I think I was I was thinking more about the cost responsibility, but then I did the same thing, Sydney, and I was reading back through and I saw that hourly rate. Um, and that there, it seems like there would be some more additional costs with the Ron King that weren't outlined in that, you know, in the matrix that he, that they had. Um, so.
Yeah, sort of the Ron King is, is the design. It's more of like, um, and I think he would do a fantastic job. And if we go with him, I'm, there are no hesitations whatsoever. And, but I think the cost will be a wash. It's just putting together the puzzle pieces. So like, if you decide to go with the Ron King playgrounds, um it's just that we'll have to have a few more additions where we have somebody do the CAD engineering um in that part of it. And then and then with SE group, that's more of a one-stop where they do everything together.
Yeah.
So both of those work, you know, both of those can work equally well.
Um, I, I'm influenced by, by Ed having personal experience with this company, SE group, so that kind of swings me in their favor.
And I do like, I mean, well, you know, I think we certainly could manage the, the other pieces um that, you know, Ryan came for those sort of outlines that he would have to, you know, coordinate or, or work with. You know, let's face it, no one here is a civil
Yeah.
engineer expert or degree. So, you know, typically my, you know, my, my, you know, sort of standard position is, you know, you know, we have a, an organization that is willing to do it all and, and coordinate everything then. That is, uh, you know, even if it ends up being, you know, two or $3,000 more in the long run, it's, it's well worth it.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you very quickly could pay, you know, 10, 20, 30 times that if you don't catch something that, you know, maybe somebody with, you know, more experience would have caught.
I know we haven't gotten here in our agenda yet, but I, I was thinking too about one of our exciting donation things that we get to talk about tonight. Um, and I felt like um between the, the incorporation of natural, but also perhaps some things like swings and more traditional playground equipment, plus the potential, if, if we decide to accept uh what's, you know, coming down the pike a little bit later in the meeting. Um, it seems, I felt like there was more flexibility and more willingness to incorporate some of those elements from the SE group. Um, it seemed like the, the one from Ron King is incredible and has really great examples, but seemed much more like they come in sort of with a vision of what they wanna execute and anything that else that we might wanna incorporate there. They say like, okay, we can leave space for that.
Yeah.
But it's not the same sort of like all encompassing design.
Yeah.
Um, I really liked at the beginning, I thought what got to that was at the beginning of the SE group um proposal, when they talked about that space being like that entrance to the school and how does it reflect like from the drive in all the way through to classroom experience? It, it felt much more all encompassing. Um, and it just seemed like sort of the tone of that was much more inclusive of some of those other elements that we might wanna bring in beyond just the natural playground elements. Um, so I would say I'm leaning more towards the SE group because of those things.
That, that was a similar feeling that I had reading through um both. And then like Ed said, just reading through their um personnel, um, the uh qualifications of the different people involved.
Yeah.
We, we don't know what's gonna come up and it sounds like they, they have many more resources than possibly the other.
Yeah, we're different. Um, I have to say, one thing that occurred to me looking through, oh, it's Union Elementary School design page 21 on the SE proposal. And I'm, I'm looking at these spaces and thinking, okay, if you have kids out for recess and it's, there's some, there's some like, looks like wooded trails. Um, did the committee give any thought to how kids are gonna need to be supervised with this different kind of approach to a play space?
Well, there's like a whole design process that goes on. So like, I can imagine they're gonna obviously meet with the school folks and talk about, here's how we, here's all the spaces that are available. How do you, I, I think it goes the other way around. I think they talk to the school folks and they're like, here's how we manage recess and here's our re, people resources. How does that take design elements?
Yeah.
I don't think they come to us and be like, we're gonna put stuff in the woods and you go supervise it. I, I've been through a process similarly in another school and that's how it worked. They really looked like.
I would be, I'd be careful sort of looking at some of these displays and say, uh, you know, and, and thinking that's what they're gonna bring to the table here because it, these are just illustrative of what they've done in the past.
Yeah.
Who knows the land constraints and the budget constraints that, you know, Union had for this project. So, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
Well, it's, it just occurred to me looking at this tea, if I were
Yeah.
no recess duty, what would I do?
But I thought, like, if they were putting our grounds on one of these,
Yeah.
they might include all of our trails.
Yeah.
But our kids don't go out on the trails at recess. So it's in the picture, but that's not part of recess.
Yeah, okay.
So like if they, if, if, if they were putting our, you know, if, if this was a picture of our plot of land, it would have all kinds of areas that are not accessed during recess.
Yeah, yeah.
It may have also been.
They do.
Go ahead, Sydney.
I was just gonna say back to what Leslie was saying, they come here for two full days and nights for input and community, you know, kind of gathering of information and it's our vision with them. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I was also thinking with the uh snow on its way, you know, the ease of clearing the play space for the kids and how much are we putting on custodians on a particular design to keep it clear and open?
Um, yeah.
It needs to be manageable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or we need to figure out a way to clear the snow into a sledding hill.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, any other conversation about this or are we ready? Would someone like to make a motion? To um accept one of them?
I'm moving to accept the SE group's proposal.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion on the table from Ed to accept the SE group's um RFP proposal and a second from Leslie. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the SE group, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. Excellent, thank you. And thank you to the playground committee and to Sydney and for everyone to, you know, so far in this process, to the person who is here surveying today because the, the ground appeared. I pulled it and I saw them, I was like, yes! Never been so excited about surveying.
Literally here all day. I was under the impression it's gonna be a couple hours and every time I looked out, he was out there.
Wow.
Um, okay, our next agenda item, very exciting, is um accepting some donations. And so we do have, I've taken one at a time. We have a letter in the board packet um from Sydney. Um, so we are, um, I'm just gonna read the letter here, the, the memo that we have here from Sydney. So it is with great pleasure that I request, request the Grantham School Board accepted a donation of $14,000 from a local anonymous donor previously reviewed in August. The donation comes at this time as the GBS grounds renovation and playground committee has successfully raised $7,000 in order to meet the criteria for this two to one match. Again, many thanks to this kind donor. This puts the district only 7,000 away from its final goal. So we would need a motion to accept the $14,000. So we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. Okay, and thank you.
Ask if anybody wants to have discussion?
No. No.
If we have an address for um our anonymous donor to say thank you.
Um, and I will just say, you know, individually, thank you for this, you know, we're so appreciative. I also just wanted to do a quick shout out and say thank you to everyone that donated to help us get to the point of being able to accept this. If you made a $5 donation to buy one raffle ticket or you're writing a, a check like this, every single one of those is a, a piece along the way. So we wouldn't be able to be accepting this if we didn't have those individual $5 raffle ticket donations or the change that kids brought into school. All of that makes a huge difference. And we, I just wanted to recognize that and say thank you. So, okay, our next uh do, donation, which I have a hard time even seeing this as real, is a donation and a conversation um that Sydney has had with Yankee Barn Homes. Um, and so Sydney, I'll let you kind of talk through that.
Well, I was just gonna share my screen so everybody who's there and at home can see what we're talking about, if that's all right.
Yeah.
So um as we've been looking at um our renovation and playground project, one of the things that we can call a good side effect of the pandemic is how much our staff and students are outside and enjoying the outside for eating, for snack, for instruction and for meeting time during school and after school and in summer school, et cetera, et cetera. Um, in looking at this whole project and talking with some of our amazing partners in the community, um, I started meeting with um Paul Marinelli from Yankee Barn Homes, who is such an incredible advocate for the children of Grantham. And um, I get pretty choked up talking about this, but anyway, um Yankee Barn Homes has offered to build this um at a great donation to the um GBS Playground Project, the Grantham Elementary Pavilion, designed Yankee Barn style. This is a size that would accommodate two of our grade levels, you know, complete grade levels outside. And um, and our biggest grade levels, we took our biggest grade levels. And um, I'll just let everybody kind of soak it in for a minute. And then just to get into some of the details of the donation, let me turn it this way. Um, so Mr. Marinelli is clearly interested in a contribution that demonstrates support for the school system and the children of Grantham. The cost of this structure for Yankee Barn is 110,000. They will donate 82,500, approximately 75%. The portion that would come from our GBS renovation and playground project would be only 25%, which is 27,500, um, which is less than even cost. And um, just to kind of put this in perspective for everyone, um, Mrs. Lassard and I, w- we're looking at the cost of our tent rentals over the last two years and those total 31,000 um in renting our tents during the pandemic. So when you compare our tent rentals to having this absolutely gorgeous um outdoor space that GBS can have forever from our amazing partner in the community, I just think it's a, a really wonderful thing. And there are other schematics that I put in your board packet, but I think probably the first one is the one that everybody would wanna see. And I didn't know if any of you had any questions for me. Um, Mr. Marinelli was supposed to be here tonight and unfortunately he got called away. Um, but he did ask me to present this on his behalf and um, his kindness and generosity, I'm sure, won't be lost on all of you. It's very quiet there, I think.
I'm choked up. I'm just leaning that.
It's overwhelming generosity and it's, it's wonderful and it's, it's just wonderful.
Yes. The timing is important. The timing is important because um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there's a delay, it must be. The the timing is important because um, if we accept this donation, then SE group would actually take these schematics and work this into their design as they work with us.
Yeah.
Yeah. And. Just from a. I guess, a technical perspective, where? Where would these funds come from?
This would be part of the entire playground playground project. So we actually have the funds technically available now, but um, this wouldn't happen, I don't think, unless the whole playground project happens. So this would become part of the the bigger playground bucket, as you will.
Okay, so this would get, so if the bond doesn't pass, this goes away.
I mean, you could decide that.
That is an interesting question, Ed.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a given, the board would decide that.
Yeah, okay, the other piece, just to, I mean, again, this is fantastic all the way around. The other thing to keep in mind is. The foundation work that we'll have to put in, in addition to the twenty-seven five, which again, I. I still think this is a no-brainer, but it, you know, just to be crystal clear, this isn't going to be a twenty-seven five project.
Yeah.
This would be. You know, somewhere between forty and fifty thousand, I would imagine by the time of that, which still. Seems like a home run, but.
Well, and I think some of that will also factor into what happens with those tennis courts.
That was, well, that was my next question of, I mean, this is gonna accommodate, looking at the plans. I didn't see a. Yeah, I'm just, I mean. Very good sized structure. Um.
I can't read the numbers, but they're on there.
It's about five hundred square feet.
So, okay. Yeah, we'll just have to look on where exactly this goes. Whether tennis courts or, you know, all that works, but yeah. Overall, I think this is a fantastic opportunity for us.
Sydney, is the um, uh, the donation from Yankee Barn just the structure? Or is it also all the preparation site work and?
We have to do the pad, we're doing the foundation and then they do the structure.
Okay.
I just wanted to be clear, thank you.
To your point, Ed, though, we'll be doing site work no matter what anyway, so in a certain way, you're right that it's an additional cost in another way, it's just. But it's gonna wrap it into.
Yeah.
It's an additional.
Entire budget.
If the bond doesn't pass.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which, you know, unfortunately, we're not gonna know until March.
Yeah.
Which, at that point, this will be going underway, at least from a planning perspective for them.
I'm thinking about. If. Having this. What, you know, outside of the the playground project, if having this structure meets the need that we're currently filling with these tent rentals. What that sort of like?
Yeah.
I I I'm thinking of it like you made me sort of rethink, like, i- is is this something that we, if we decide we wanna move forward with it? That maybe we pull out and say, we're moving forward with no matter what.
Yep.
Because.
Yeah.
If we sink thirty thousand dollars into another two years of tent rentals, when we could have.
Yeah.
Put it towards this. Yeah, especially if, and I and I don't know where we stand in terms of our um, our grant money, you know, for for the, you know, COVID relief money, I know we have a longer timeline out to use that, we still have, you know, we're still, you know, years within the timeline of using that. Um, but it seems like this is would be a much better investment than tents.
It was dark when I came in. No, we tipped them down for the weather.
Just um, a a lot of people watching this or or listening to it recorded later might ask, why aren't we just buying tents? Um, and just to let everybody know that, that it's still cheaper and safer for us to rent them because the safety inspections and the insurance make it a little prohibitive for us to buy them and be responsible for them and ensure them. And to do the weekly checks and the training for the weekly checks and everything, so um, you know, just, I I think that's probably a logical question. So just to answer that one, because I'd be thinking it too.
Okay, other thoughts on this? It sounds like from the conversation I'm hearing that we may be moving in the direction of a motion to accept this. But I wanna see if there's other conversation or discussion before we.
I'm going to accept the donation from Yankee Barn Homes.
Okay, so we have a motion from Leslie to accept the donation from Yankee Barn Homes.
Oh, second.
A second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. And when you communicate with Paul, please extend our thanks to him and we will say that many, many more times to come in the future, but this will be our first one. Okay, our next agenda item is a follow-up on the voucher presentation. Um, and I think Sydney will have that for us.
Yep, um, this, I'm just gonna be really fast because um, I'm not sure of how many of you have heard. But I, we did the voucher presentation when the select board was here. There are, there's now an amendment that has been passed to the vouchers, have you all been aware, made aware of the amendment? Alright, so the amendment will essentially make it two main changes. Um. I just have one slide to pull up, so just give me one second. We'll make two main changes to the current education freedom account that we talked about last time, but they are two very significant changes. So um, number one is that it will, the plan for the amendment is to remove the income limit of the family. So right now, families have to be three hundred percent um. Within the poverty level. Which I believe is seventy-eight thousand dollars a year for a family of four. And then the second really big one that I think and hope will kind of make peoples make people wake up and kind of eyes pop open is that the attention of the amendment is for all of these vouchers to be funded locally. And what that would mean is that as you go through the Grantham School District budget, there would be a line for education freedom accounts. And it would come out of our local budget for every child in Grantham who wants to access a voucher to go someplace else besides our school. So there's a formula that they put out in the amendment and I asked Mrs. Lassard to figure out what the cost for a voucher would be for every Grantham student, so remembering that adequacy is currently three thousand eight hundred fifty approximately per student. Um, the formula is here and I'm not gonna go through the entire thing, but this is what the formula would look like for Grantham specifically. And what you would see in your school district budget line is Grantham taxpayers paying ten thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and ninety-nine cents per student for any student who decided to go to private school, religious school or homeschool or to another school that accepted tuition students.
And would the district have to fund every student who applied?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Every single one.
So that removes all of the operating money that we need to. That's fine.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you're looking at twenty students and I could very easily think of twenty students almost off the top of my head. Who are homeschooled or at private school or religious school, that's, you know, we're looking at a two hundred thousand dollar budget line that we would have to raise and appropriate from Grantham taxpayers or cut two hundred thousand dollars, one or the other.
And and these schools don't have to be approved or fit within any criteria nor are they overseen.
They give the money to the family.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So if somebody wanted to go to a religious military school, um, not of a Christian faith that would bother others, we would just have to let that money go.
Yeah.
And and the district itself would raise and appropriate the money and write the check.
And no accountability for where the money goes, nobody sees where it goes.
Yeah.
That's just irresponsible. I'm sorry, I think.
So, I mean. I know that the last voucher conversation that we had was concerning, but this amendment is.
Yeah.
It's critical.
This this amendment is is truly destructive.
Cause now the burden lies solely on the town, on the district.
Yeah.
With no funding.
Yeah.
Here's our mandate.
Yeah.
And the only way to raise that revenue is tax, there is just no other way to do it, property tax.
And and there's no limit on on what the request could be. I mean, somebody could ask to go to private school in France.
It literally doesn't matter, the money goes to the family.
And if they wanna go.
Yep, they do whatever they.
It could be families saying they're homeschooling but not educating their child at all.
Yeah.
And then what if the child then comes back into the school?
Yeah.
And wants to leave again to go to another, just. Yep. So destructive.
How how is the money paid out? Like, is it done in quarter payments or?
It's quarter payments, so it goes, I think, thirty, thirty, twenty, twenty throughout the year.
What recourse do we have with this? None?
Well, there's legislative recourse, so anybody who, please let people know about this because not a lot of people know that this piece of legislation is out there. Um, and people need to speak out about it and talk to legislature and representatives and talk about what this would do to local district funding. This one has the potential, not in Grantham, I will say, but this one has the potential to shut down some small schools.
I mean, yeah, think about it. Clarissa, yeah.
Well, thank you for the update, Sydney.
Yeah.
Okay.
It looks like Brenda has her hand up, I don't know if she needs to say something.
No. In real life or in Zoom?
In Zoom.
In Zoom. I talk with my hands so much that Zoom now raises my hand automatically. I'll be like, you look like you're trying to raise your hand, like I'm not. I just talk with my hands. Okay, our next agenda item is the budget. So um, our first uh, line for the budget tonight is instruction. That's you, you're on.
So in doing this this year, I realized that, I knew I was green last year, but now I realize how green I was when I did this last year. Thank you for being so kind to me last year.
We were all in a deep COVID fog, so true.
So I, some of this I do and some of it Karen and Sydney do, so um, I'm just gonna go through the things I do, is that how I should do it, Sydney?
Yeah, and I'm trying to think, I can share my screen so people can see it, but I'm trying to think, I'm not sure if there's a way for me to highlight the lines, but I might be able to just use my cursor. If anybody wants to try and follow along.
Sydney, we can't see the, the board's pretty far away from us, so.
Yeah.
You're probably alright, meaning we'll look when our binder is.
I was just thinking of of people at home, if anybody at home wants.
Thank you for being considerate.
The first one that I. Work on is um, a summer program, regular ed summer program. And for summer program next year, we're not asking for any change in funds, we're hoping that we can provide the same sort of program that we offered last year, which was super beneficial to our students. Um, and then about two-thirds of the way down is five-three-two-one-oh achievement test scores. And that remains the same and that's for our NWEA, which we are actually using more efficiently and better now that we've really started focusing on MTSS and data-driven instruction intervention, which is really neat. Um, under that, five-three-two-two-zero is enrichment, there's a fourteen percent decrease. Um, I don't know why that decreases there, just those are the field trip requests that were made. When we get to the instructional supplies, there is a twenty-nine percent increase. Um, this year, we included the summer book bags, which last year we incorporated that into a grant. And then we also added math and language, which is an intervention tool that teachers felt strongly would be beneficial. Um. It could be used whole class, small group or individual. And it um, it's daily practice of skills that they've already learned in a very independent way that students are able to do it on their own. So that that adds about fourteen hundred dollars to the. And then with our MTSS, there are some foundations and prevention supplies. And we found this year that as they were doing running records and reading data, we have a couple different versions of our of one of our assessment systems that aren't jiving together really well. So we wanna get everyone up with the current version so that everyone has the same data. So that's what um, constitutes the increase in instructional supplies. Before I go on, are there questions on that? Cause I know sometimes I talk really fast. So then, um, five-six-one-one-zero is workbooks. Um, again, a seventeen percent increase. Last year, before ordering, I asked everyone to go through their cabinets and drawers and everywhere else and count up books. So we didn't order as many last year because we found everything that we had, but now we've used everything that we had, so now we have to order full supplies. Um, textbooks, we had a thirty-six percent decrease. Periodicals, there's a decrease, again, I'm not a hundred percent sure why, but I can speculate that last year, I think people purchased more periodicals not knowing whether they were gonna go remote and if they needed things they could send home. Um, there's a very large increase of AD materials and software of a hundred and sixty-five percent, which seems a little bit crazy. But um, this line item, I absorbed soundtrack and then being, which were historically in the library media. But we found that there's, um, they're a better fit in this line item because they're not used whole school, they're used for certain classroom for the instructional supplies. And then there's no new equipment, so the eleven hundred line, um. Well, I'm gonna stop there because it includes other stuff, so I'll let Sydney talk about the other stuff.
Uh, the only other thing that it includes is tuition and we're looking at approximately, if we go student per student, we're looking at approximately a fifty-eight thousand dollar decrease in our tuition for next year.
Does that include um, extra people?
It does not include any extra people.
So that's.
I'm not sure if you, it's just student for, just moving students forward plus Ledyard Charter School, we budgeted for three students. Um, and we do currently have, I think, four students at Ledyard, so that was ac- close to accurate this year. Um, so we didn't build any um, buffer students. I didn't know if the board would like to do that this year.
I think that it goes, we should have that on our list to visit at the end. That's always a good reminder that if, depending on what the final budget breakdown looks like, something that we potentially could add in or. Just to, just to revisit.
Well, there is the tuition trust fund, so.
Yeah.
And I I need to clarify that fifty-eight thousand because it's a fifty-eight thousand dollar decrease from our actual this year, not from budgeted last year. From our actual payments that are expected this year. So the the decrease is just slightly different from what was budgeted last year.
Sydney, on the, the wages, the instructional? Five thousand, a three and a half percent. Um. What is driving the wage decrease?
I believe it would be new hires, but let me clarify that with Karen Lassard and actually, can let me pull Karen in while we're having our board. So it's usually um, gonna be people leaving and people coming, but she can clarify that. There she is.
There was a couple retirements last year of some folks who had been here.
Yeah.
Quite a while.
For a very long time. Yep.
There's actually four new staff, and that's what makes up that whole amount.
Okay.
Difference in the salary.
So it's basically just, yeah, change in personnel.
Any questions about this area right now? Kristin, I appreciated you sharing the breakdown of things with us. Because I feel like there's some really intentional stuff there that's really good for us to know kind of that I could see connections to, like, knowing about the mountain math and language, like, from other conversations about encouraging students to become more independent that we've heard, you know, that the board has heard. And just some of the other sort of connections to stuff that I think we've gotten from you or from other folks during updates. So I think it's just nice to not always see the specific breakdown, but I think in this instance, it was really, it connected to a couple of things for me that you've mentioned before. Okay, so our next area is, let's see. In my book, it's counseling. On my thing, it's library and media. What are we doing?
Well, that tab should be.
All right, I think, I know Mr. Pollard is ready, so.
We're doing library and media? Library and media was listed next on my.
And I'm just going to bring Mr. Pollard in.
So we changed some of the tabs. So instead of counseling, instead of guidance, I think, on your tabs in your binder, it says now counseling. Budget.
Yep.
So in the end, we're.
No, we're doing library and media, right?
Right, yeah.
Welcome, Mr. Pollard.
Oh, hey, everybody.
Hi.
So I apologize for any background noise in my house. It's bedtime now with three crazy children, so if things are happening in the background, I take no responsibility. So like Kristen did, I'm going to start with the lines that I'm responsible for, which most of that top section I am not responsible for. So we're going to start library online, which is about halfway down the page in library media. And you'll notice a three percent decrease mainly because, Chris, as Kristen said, she took a couple of things from library online and moved them into instruction. And we're keeping pretty standard on what the software things that we're using whole school wide. So that stayed pretty similar. Library supplies, no change there. Library books was a ten percent, if I'm looking at the right line, hold on. Yep, ten percent decrease. I feel that our library is chock full right now, and actually, we have a lot of full shelves and a lot of really stocked shelves, so I didn't think that we needed to kind of keep that line where it was, and we were able to take a decrease in that for sure. Periodicals is a hundred percent decrease, just the fact that we weren't using them and they were not necessary. Library software, fifty-one percent increase due to just, or sorry, fifty-one percent decrease due to a couple pieces of software that we weren't using anymore and that are not needed. Nothing in furniture renovations, nothing for new equipment, and nothing for dues and fees. I believe that's all I'm responsible for.
Bedtime.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any questions for Mr. Pollard?
Nope. Thanks, Mr. P. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome, of course. Thanks for having me.
Sydney, what's the insurance buyout?
So when we offer health insurance to all of our employees, they also have the option, if they're insured by a spouse, to get a buyout. So if they prove insurance through the spouse, then they get a buyout for a certain percentage of our insurance premium.
Okay, what do you have up next for us, Sydney?
So we've got school counselor, which is pretty self-explanatory, and we didn't ask Mrs. Widman to come because this one's pretty steady, stable every year.
She doesn't change her.
Kind of like our school's counseling department.
Just the way you want it.
Absolutely.
All right. Yes. Any questions on that one? Okay.
Are we, are we moving to a, we're moving to? I may have to speculate. All right, I'm good. Sorry.
No, no problem. All right.
Okay, so now we're moving to tech.
All right.
I'm going to move into the light.
Step into the light, Randy.
You can get your spotlight so. So this is all the twenty-two, twenty-five stuff. The first line I'll talk about is GBS Technology Services. What that includes is our second level tech support and, you know, the folks at ITC Care who are sort of my backup. Whenever there's something that you need, they also manage the server backup for that, including our firewall and running the VPN that sends all of our network stuff over to the SAU. This also includes all of our domain names for gbsox.org, su75.org, those sorts of things. Also, some services for monitoring the Chromebooks while the students are in class, so that the teachers can kind of watch over what they're doing and keep them on task. It also includes money for our mobile device management, which manages all of our Apple devices at the school. The iPads, the computers allows us to push software out and manage those things remotely. Last year, we had included some money for E-Rate category two. This year, we don't need that. What that money was for was to buy infrastructure stuff for the network itself. And so we had budgeted for some switches for the network, and I'll talk about that in just a minute too, when I get to the next line. But that's everything that's in technology services. And I think the number's actually less than it was last year. The next one is GBS telecommunications management. That includes our internet and telephone for this building. We also are part of the E-Rate program. So basically, half of that internet cost is paid for through that particular program. One of the, we just redid a new three-year contract with First Flight, who provides our fiber internet into the building. That was at a lower cost and they tripled our speed. So we went from a hundred up, a hundred down, to three hundred up, three hundred down. That potential, that potentially could go up to a gigabit if we ever wanted it because the infrastructure is just fiber and it's great. So the reason I wanted to talk about that in the context of the other E-Rate stuff is that that theoretically allows us to have that level of speed in the building. We're limited by the switches and our Wi-Fi in the building to about a hundred at the moment. So even though that's coming in, there's actually only one place, well, two places where we can get it. There's a newer switch in one of the cabinets here. We got some outdoor Wi-Fi last year. So we have a new Wi-Fi that gets the speed out to it. So the fastest internet in the entire GBS place is in the parking lot. So.
For the car line.
Right. For the car line. So we did order the new switches. We ordered the new Wi-Fi because of the chip shortage. That stuff is not going to show up till maybe February-ish. But we're hoping that by the end of, you know, this school year, all that infrastructure will be in place and will be operating at the three hundred, three hundred. So that's it for GBS telecommunication management. And that's almost exactly the same as last year. SAU telecommunications management is the same. That's telephone and internet over at SAU. That includes just Comcast and the IP phones that they have. There is something going on at the town with fiber. So maybe in the future, we'll have much better speed and stuff over at the SAU would make everybody happy. Next one, we have a small line for technology enrichment. That's like four hundred bucks that have been used for tech team in the past, and I think Mr. Pollard will put that to good use this year also. Technology supplies just includes things like printer toner, repair parts, various stuff that I need to keep things working around the school. Software is almost all Microsoft licensing. That's for, you know, basically the way that they budget that is, your school is this size, this is how much you pay.
Yeah.
And even if we only use one license, it is what it is. Replacement technology. Every year, as you know, we get a batch of Chromebooks for the third graders that follows them through. This includes that. We're on a four-year cycle for replacing the Macs for the teachers. It takes us three years to do that. So next year is kind of our buy year, as in football buying.
Right.
So basically, we have no expense for teacher laptop replacement next year, which is a great thing. We have a couple of things. I think we're going to get a new machine over at the SAU, and we're thinking of getting some iPads also, but overall, that number is down also, and that's. Other new technology equipment is a couple of printers. The ones that we have are cycling out because they are ancient and they've been here since long before I was here. And then there's an item at the end, which is fairly significant, nineteen thousand, five forty-eight, that says light speed. What that is, each one of the classrooms has a teacher microphone teachers use to speak with to the students, especially during COVID with wearing masks. That's been critical for them to be able to communicate so that the students can hear. The systems that we have here in the building have been here since the renovation. I talked to Leslie Brown about. So when, in two thousand nine, when those things were installed, you can see one of them up there with the little light.
Yeah.
Those are well over ten years old. They're analog, the knobs on them are like, if you ever had saw guitar amp, where you turn the knob, that's sort of how it goes with some of those at this point now. So this is something that definitely is a need to occur at some point in the next few years at the school. Next year, since we're not buying the Macs for the teachers, might be a good time to do that, but it is a significant expense. And that is what I have for tech, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
If I'm going to say that correctly, the fifteen thousand increase in that technology replaced majority of that system?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be for the light speed, otherwise.
I just did that thing now, then.
That would have dropped otherwise. The delta.
Yeah, so.
Oh, okay.
You know, the cost.
I just want to say that's the. Sorry, go ahead, Randy.
No, I was just going to say that the light speed itself is about, you know, nineteen, almost twenty thousand, but the difference is the reduction from what our regular. So go ahead, Sydney.
And what I was going to tell the board is that that nineteen thousand, I would recommend that we add that to the list, like, when we get to the end of the budget, that that could be something where there are some other options, depending on where the budget lands. Because depending on what the board chooses to do with the remaining S R three money as we move into twenty-two, twenty-three, we have potential of using REAP grant money for some of that, for the majority of that next year. So I would recommend that's on that, you know, let's see where we land and decide if we want to fund that a different way. I think it's definitely a necessity. You know, having those systems, they've been around too long, and they do make a really big difference in, in attention and focus and clarity of instruction. So there's no concern with getting them. It's just that there's a variety of options about to fund them.
And it would represent a pretty good upgrade for the teachers as well because the current systems work on infrared. It's line of sight, but if your ear gets in front of it, it kind of cuts in and out, you know, or a student gets in front of you, or you bend over the wrong way, or you're facing the wall. So they work, they've been very reliable, and they've been a mainstay of the classrooms, but I think an upgrade is definitely overdue.
Okay, and I missed whether you identify a replacement.
It would be the same, it would be a newer type of the same sort of system, and what it would use is actual radio as opposed to the infrared. So this is basically what a vendor has quoted us to upgrade.
Yeah.
The same type of system that we have to much more modern technology and new equipment. The new stuff would be from the same manufacturer as the one we've got. It's called light speed that's coming.
Okay.
And they are the recommended vendor for that.
Ten years is a long time in technology.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Actually, I think for, you know, let's see, yeah, we're like twelve at this point, so.
It's time.
Yeah.
Any questions on this area? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for waiting.
All right, we're going to backtrack to health services. And like school counseling, health services is very self-explanatory and just about the same every year. So, so we didn't ask Mrs. Islander to come in for this one.
Any questions on health services? Okay.
And last one, I'll have Mrs. Reed walk you through, and it is course reimbursement.
So in staff development, the course reimbursement line did go up, and it's a good problem that it went up. We used all of our course reimbursement money this year already. And part of the union agreement, the CBA, is that if we use it all, we add a thousand dollars for the next year. So I think that's fabulous. And other than that, everything remained the same except for professional books. Last year, we did not request money for professional books just in an attempt to, with COVID and everything else, try to cut down somewhere. And we went back to requesting the historical three thousand dollars.
And that's for instruction, right?
So that's for professional development books. So, for example, the anxious child, anxious parents, anxious child book we did last year came from that line.
Any other questions about that area? Okay, that's it for our budget presentation for tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Kristen, and Mr. Pollard, and Mr. Britton, and Sydney, thank you all. And Karen, thank you, Karen. Hi, Karen. Okay, so our next agenda item is my least favorite part of this whole thing that we do. We do have a resignation in our board packet. And so there is a very thoughtful letter you will find in your board packet from Madeline Kudobert. um from Madeline Kudoburk um to her plan is to, um, this would be her letter of resignation effective at the end of June two thousand twenty-two. So we get her until the end of June, but she's giving us plenty of lead time. So um, she actually has given us a couple of years. Lead time. Um, so we do need a motion to accept with a deep and profound gratitude. I don't even have the words. So profound gratitude and like she says that she will say final words uh at the end of her tenure and we will have final words for her as well. So we do need a motion to accept the resignation of Madeline Kudoburk um effective at the end of June twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
And I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay.
Aye, aye, aye. To say nay?
Yes, no. Madeline, we're gonna make it hard for you though. It's, it's one of those things where I, you know, I'm so happy to, to launch her out into her next adventures, but.
She has given us every ounce that she can go. So sad for us.
More than, okay, our next agenda item is the special education posting. And so you will find in the board packet um the posting for Director of Special Services and I will let Sydney speak to this.
Yeah, I normally don't bring postings to the board, but this one is significant because we will need to know if it's acceptable to the board to post for a full-time position. So this was something that was recommended at the last board meeting where um we started to justify the pre-K through twelve need for a Director of Special Services that is a, a year-round one-point-oh F T E before we start getting this ad out. And this is the right time of year to start advertising for this position to make sure that we get the best candidates. Uh, the board will need to decide if this is something that you would like to move forward with or not.
I'm extremely supportive.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it needs to be full-time. Yeah, I am as well. Okay, so we need. Pre-K through twelve.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Yeah.
And, and beyond twelve.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
We need a motion to approve the um posting for Director of Special Services at the full-time um as a full-time position.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. All right, so. Quickly, yeah, Sydney, do we know what the market is like for good people?
I don't know. I looked, um, I looked on Ed Jobs, New Hampshire today and I didn't see any for special ed director, which gave me hope. Um, so that's good so far. So we want to get this out there pretty quickly.
This is sort of like s- s- very start of that.
Yeah.
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 Okay, so our next agenda item is uh to approve the survey that would go out as we start to rethink uh or think about redoing the um website.
Yeah, so we've been um brainstorming and I'm just trying to get the right direction for all of you. I'm, I apologize for somebody who I'm probably making dizzy. But anyway, we, we want to get a website out for community feedback on making sure that before we go into the website process, which is something we've been talking about this year. There we go. That uh we've asked all the questions of the community and staff and students, parents, guardians, every, everybody, taxpayers, community organizations, partners, anything that we would like to make our website as accessible and as useful as possible. So I wanted the board to be able to take a look at this and to be able to review it to see if you'd like any edits on it before we release it.
Do you think this will give you um a good basis of information to move forward to the next step?
I, I think it's a starting place. That's one of the things that we talked about. This is step one where we will have an initial idea of what people are looking for, what people use the website for and how often they access it. And then I think the next step will be to dive deeper with those subgroups. We'll need to probably take a deeper dive with staff, a deeper dive with students and a deeper dive with parents about how we can make those different uh sections more useful. But I think this will give us the direction that we need where we would probably start researching and demoing some websites to see who could be the best for GBS to work with.
What were you thinking about for timing of when this would go out?
The survey?
Yeah.
It, there's really no rush on this, you know, so you, you can discuss that as a board. I know sometimes it's good over the holidays because people have time at home to complete a survey as opposed to the um, you know, the other busy work weeks. And sometimes people don't want to be bothered with it, but over the holidays, it can go either way.
I think it would be um, my only thought on the timing of it, and I, I, I didn't imagine you were gonna release it in the next three or four days, but would be to wait until after the first round of all my report cards go out.
Good idea.
Um, because I, I know that was one of the things that's, you know, referenced in here and, you know, parents have, haven't really had too much of a chance to interact with that. Um, and so you're just holding off until with that one piece that is still new this year, holding off until folks have had a chance to like get in and find those and see those and all of that stuff.
Great. Are there any additional um questions or responses that you wanted on here?
The only thing I could think of is, do you want to have a, you know, can you do a, any other input kind of final question?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Free comment.
I can add that. I know that um Brenda also suggested we have one question about where you get your information. And she also suggested we add Grantham News because a lot of people do connect to Grantham News, which would be good for us to know. So in this one, we can add it.
Do you need an official approval of this from us or do you just need us to give you feedback and give our stamp?
Um, usually with a big community survey, you, you do give an official.
Sure.
Okay.
Unless there's more questions or conversation about this, we'd need a motion to approve the website survey. Second, okay, so we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor of approving the um website survey, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, our next agenda item is accepting the special education reports. And those are in our board packet. Uh, just one question I had was, how frequent does this review happen? I'm very, I don't recall seeing this before. These reviews.
I, yeah, they, they're, they're also uh changing everything. So some of them happen once a year, summer every two years, summer every three years. And I can honestly tell you, I don't know what the timeline is for this particular report. Um, actually, let me see, he's reviewed.
That was three years ago.
Three years ago?
Three years. Okay, so this one's, this one's a three year.
No, a lot happened.
Yeah. So anyway, like most of our special education reports, we did extremely well and our compliance is excellent. Um, we, we have been notified that the Department of Special Education is going to be changing the way that they do special education administration compliance where it looks like they're going to be changing to more of a, like we'll be getting a special ed report card almost. So as we hear more about that, we'll let you know. They've released a draft out for us to look at and Madeline and I have talked about it briefly, but not in too much detail. But maybe that will start to streamline some of these things.
For what it's worth, I worked for a time in the Massachusetts Department of Education. And the special ed section was by far the largest component of the staff.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the special education report? We need a motion to accept the special education report. So moved. And I need a second. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Okay, our next item is um the curriculum cycle.
Take it away, Mrs. Reed.
Okay, so when I was just looking in the board packet, I apologized. I didn't pick up on this earlier. I think unless I printed it wrong, um the second table is there, but the first table isn't. So we're missing the first set of eight years. That was the twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Oh. And, oh, but Sydney pulled it up. I was gonna say, I can't because I'm I'd be confused with everything I have going on.
I've got it.
Um, so this first table isn't in there. Um. Oh, no, because you're pulling up the same thing I'm pulling up. But the initial, original document that I had sent had a initial eight years. But it was, it was the same thing. So it doesn't matter. So if you just change the years, eight years back, because it's eight years, it just replicated itself.
Oh.
So twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, so it's the years that are.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so when I started working on the budget this year and looking at teacher requests and thinking about the meetings we've been having for MTSS and um our P L C meetings and staff meetings, talking about curriculum and ensuring that we have um continuity and curriculum through the grades. I was realizing that we don't have a curriculum cycle that we have in our school. And in an attempt to kind of streamline things and ensure that we are going in the right direction, um Sydney and I talked about it and created a curriculum cycle, starting with um reading is our first focus. Because that's what we're focusing on with MTSS right now. Um, and you can see it's built in an eight-year cycle. With the first year of each core subject being research and review, then moving into develop and define year three implementing in year four through eight. Um, living it, living the curriculum, revising and um seeing what other needs we have before we then go back and research and review on the next eight years cycle. Um, and it just in terms of the budget specifically makes it so that we're not trying to change everything financially at the same time. And it also in terms of staff resources makes it so you're not doing everything at the same time. Um. So I think we developed something that would um work really well and keep us working in a good path for um curriculum research and development. And when I have my computer back to my, to me taking charge, I can forward you the original.
Actually, Kristen, I pulled it up so people who are zooming can see it.
Okay. Oh, I forgot to mention, now that I see that little bright yellow spot. Um, in the decision that we really, the curriculum cycle, one of the things we were looking at was in, and I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see, but in two thousand twenty-five, everyday math, we are going to have a huge, if we keep everyday math, increase in the cost because all of our online stuff we have to, we'll have to renew. So we're looking at roughly ten thousand dollars above what we usually have to spend for everyday math supplies. So we kind of put that in a logical spot so that it fits nicely. If we do want to make a change, we can do it before that big chunk of money comes along.
This is great.
So I don't know if you have any questions for.
Kristen, I don't know if you can say this. Um, do you have, well, it's probably not the right time. Do you have feelings about everyday math?
Yeah.
How many are positive? How many are negative? No, don't answer that question. It's been around for quite a long time.
Yeah.
I assume it's been.
It's, yeah.
Oh, yeah, but it's, yeah. Present one. I was just curious. We can have another conversation another time.
We can have another conversation another time.
I'm stuck thinking about things in my life that I want to make a curriculum cycle for. Like this is so, like it just makes so much sense to like.
This would be a good house cleaning.
Seriously. Oh, they didn't have to do.
Eight years.
I really hope you changed the eight years.
Yeah. No, that's just, it, I think it, this just lays it out so clearly. Um, it would be really easy to wrap your head around if you were especially, I'm thinking of like new folks coming into the school to be able to just see like where they're coming into a process, like in one document to be able to look and see like, okay, in these different topics, here's where I'm coming in.
And I think things like today, I was having a conversation with Mrs. Hutchins, our math interventionist, talking about spending Title One funds and intervention materials. And this intervention material would go great with everyday math. But then thinking, okay, in the next couple of years, we're back in cycle one for math. So do we want to put that money into something that mirrors well with everyday math? Or do we want to look more globally? So it just makes the conversations more meaningful, I think.
Yeah.
Much more strategic.
Yeah, yeah. And, and as a board, I think we love the idea of having an intentional staggering of some budget impact. Well, I'm also thinking about the work involved, especially, you know.
Especially of changing curriculum meaning or just.
Yeah, I mean, it just, you know, each of those steps is, that, like the first few years, they're significant.
Yeah, they are.
That also keeps you scheduled rather than putting something off. And this is the year we focus on this.
Yeah.
And just maybe what I'm saying, the flip side of that is if you're finding out that something is not working in year four, yeah, I assume you're not going to year eight with it until.
Correct. So it's um measure refine and revise. So you can refine and revise during that time. Um, add things or take things away to make it work better. Um, but those would be conversations we'd have to come to the board.
Sydney, do you have any thoughts or um concern, you know, do you, do you think that there could be the potential of I know in the past, we've seen the state try to do some stuff with mandating curriculum changes and specific, sometimes it makes sense with areas that are looking at it sometimes. It doesn't. Um, do you see any sort of like potential enough of an interruption to this by things that the state might do that it would make it, that it would interrupt this work?
I don't right now. Um, to be honest, right now, the curriculum's not really the focus of the state's work. I mean, so
well.
Just to put it, to put it bluntly.
One area.
Acts of commission, not commission.
Yeah. Uh, yeah.
And I think Mrs. Reed did an amazing job with this and it really does spread out the work and the budget and the focus and priorities every year. So it's, it's a great thing for now and the future.
Yeah. And this is something that we are taking action to accept, to approve?
You should um formally approve this because this has, this has implications for other curriculum policies. So for example, if you're talking about curriculum policies and we do have one coming up tonight, um, looking at our course offerings and our curriculum and how we look at things would be a reference point.
Need to accept the um.
Curriculum.
Thank you. It was literally like escape. I'm going to accept the curriculum cycle. I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion from Leslie. We have a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, all right, we are on two policies for tonight. So tonight we have some.
So speaking of which.
Yes, yeah, some new, some changes, some to rescind. So we'll take them one at a time. So the new policy is policy I G E, I G E dash F. And we have it in our packet, I G E being the policy, I G E dash F being the uh form. And this is a required, this is one of those priority things that we're required to do.
We are, and this is, we of course strategically put this here after the curriculum cycle, not by, you know, by any chance. Because this is specifically important as it is parental objections to specific course material and directly relates to the discussions around HB2 and divisive concepts. So it's a requirement for the board by law to have a way for parents to object to specific course material and for parents to have an avenue and a specific path to object to those materials. So this outlines the purpose, the policy, and also includes a specific note on two-week notice for any human growth and development, human sexuality, education, and then the form that parents would fill out and documenting a meeting with Mrs. Reed about that and the decision that's made. So this is basically the, the path that any parent would follow per that new law.
For the, for, um, to object within the school, but parents also have the option to just take it to the Human Rights Council.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, this is just covering one of the options within that law.
Right, so if you look at the two paths, this is, I don't have a complaint about a teacher. I just have an objection to, for example, this book that is about to be taught. And I have a suitable replacement, I believe. And so I'm going to fill out this form because I object to this specific course material, and I'm going to meet with Mrs. Reed to see if we agree that my child can read this book instead of the book that the class is doing. That's the most basic example. If we have a case where somebody feels that they are going to complain against a teacher for violating, or an administrator, or a para, can be anybody, any educator, for violating the divisive concepts law, then that person would file a complaint with the Human Rights Commission.
And that's, the language from this one was just handed to us, correct?
Well, this is what the School Board Association recommended.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So this is, this policy is not limited to divisive concepts.
No, this is.
Yeah, across the board.
Yeah.
But it, sorry, it just becomes important that you have this because it's a legal requirement. And it, if we didn't have this and something happened with divisive concepts, you know, we, we don't want to go down that road. We want to make sure that we have this avenue available to anybody who wants to go down this road.
There's one statement, understatement of policy, the fourth paragraph. Nothing in this policy shall be construed as giving parents or guardians the right to appeal to the school board. And it just seemed to be, if, if the parent, if the parent fills out the form, and it doesn't come to agreement about what the alternative is, what, what's the parent's recourse?
I think they could bring that to the school board, but they can't bring the initial request.
Oh, to the school board.
So the initial request has to go through the form. And, yeah, um, but it does say appeal.
It says appeal.
Yeah, that's a good question.
So there's nothing, there's nothing in this law that grants an appeal to the school board.
Okay.
So what happens if there's a disagreement?
Yeah.
So the parent could bring, could have another avenue through, you know, through any kind of regular disagreement that any, you know, parent would bring about a student to the school board. So it's not like the parent would never be able to meet with you. It just couldn't be a specific appeal about that specific course material, according to the law.
Taken the step that's outlined.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's past my bedtime, but I mean, this reads to me that under, for this matter, the school board won't care.
It does come. Yeah, I mean, basically, it stops with Mrs. Reed. According to.
So powerful.
So essentially, if, if the parent doesn't agree with the decision that Mrs. Reed makes, they're done. There's no other recourse.
There is no other recourse.
Then it's all the school board.
Yeah, but the, the parent can always meet with the school board and discuss it, and they could, there are probably other avenues that they could, you know, file any other complaint the way that they would about anything else. It just can't be. You, what, what this means is that, let's take that book example, okay? So let's say that you, you're a parent and you come and you have a different book, and that's the book that you want your child to read. Mrs. Reed says, no, I'm sorry, that's not a suitable replacement. It doesn't meet our curriculum standards. This parent can't come to you and ask you to approve that book.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Does that make more sense? Because.
They go find another book.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, right. So it's looking at, Mrs. Reed has the instructional expertise to decide if that book is going to meet the same curricular needs as the book that's being offered in the class. And I know you're an amazing school board, but the assumption is not, not every school board would have that educational expertise to say that that book would meet that. So when they're talking about that kind of an appeal, that's what they're talking about.
So the parent could still come before the board and make a complaint about Kristin?
Yes.
Which is laughable.
But they couldn't ask the board to approve their.
The board materials or the content. We can't override her decisions.
We can't.
Not, not about a curriculum choice in this case, no.
It's just, I think it's something about the wording. It sounds so over, over and done and, and, I don't know, intractable.
Well, you can, with the context, knowing that the School Board Association recommended this language, like, obviously, they're going to say. Kind of protect us, right? But maybe we can adjust that language.
Well, I think you're right, Leslie, because I think the School Board Association doesn't want to put school boards across the state in a position of reviewing curriculum units and books and quizzes.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
Okay, it makes more sense. It just, I think, could have been worded yeah, a little more gracefully, but offhand, I'm not suggesting what they should say.
The specific note on sex education. What are the current operations for that? Do we have one?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's our current operation anyway, because that's actually already a law.
Yeah, this is what it is currently.
I guess the question I have is to be, the way I read this is we stuck it on the website somewhere, saying that we're going to teach it for two weeks, and then we taught it. We essentially meet that requirement, but I'm just, I'm slightly, I'm slightly just worried that, you know, it's not saying that we're going to bury it on the website, but.
So in terms of, I can speak specifically to the sex education.
Yeah.
That the classroom teachers send the curriculum to parents ahead of time in a formal letter and send the links to any videos that they're going to be showing. So parents have very explicit information on what will be taught and can make those decisions. So it's, yeah, we don't just put it on the website. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just remembering one of my friends, you know, I forget how old her son was, but he, he was, he was immature for his age, and he just wasn't ready for it. And so I think a parent needs.
To be able to make that judgment.
Yeah.
Okay. So we need a motion for the, the first reading of policy IG E, IG E dash F. All right, so I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so our next one is just a renaming. This is a name change for the Student Transportation Services policy. So we're just renaming policy. So the old name is EEAA and EEAA dash R, and we're renaming it to EEAA and EEAA dash R. And it's not in our packet. It's just a renaming.
Oh, oh, okay.
So there is, there is a policy in our packet that's EEAA, but we have to rename the student transportation one first.
Okay.
And that was my error. I coded it wrong, and I put an extra A in there. And so I just need your permission to change the name. And I actually don't think we need two readings on that, if you're all right with that.
Yeah.
Oh, I think.
So we need a motion for the name change to rename policy EEAA and EEAA dash R to EEAA and EEAA dash R. Second. All right, so we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and any opposed, say nay. Okay, so now, looking at policy EEAA, this is audio and video surveillance on school property. This is a update for pertaining to new laws.
Yeah, yeah, several new laws passed over the past two years with video and audio surveillance and specifically on school buses. So all of those are reflected here.
Just a couple of usage things at the very bottom of the first page. I think that last point maybe should read, although video surveillance is permitted rather than permissible.
Got it.
Yeah. And on the second page, under audio recordings, there's a list of bullet points. And then the paragraph underneath that should say audio recording says a missing O.
It's only if they're done in hours.
Yeah. And then at the top of that section on audio recording, to recordings on buses, transportation, it only mentions audio recordings. Could some of those also be video recordings? Like the musical performances, ceremonies, assemblies?
Well, this is, this section. Yeah, this, we don't really need to put that in there because there are only specific laws for how long you can retain an audio recording. So I'm, I'm sure that these are only listed in here because you can keep video recordings.
Oh, because it's about how long?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Right, it's about how long you can keep it. Yeah.
Okay.
And when they're authorized, both.
Yeah.
Under the, um, video and audio recordings used for student discipline matters, does the school board need to be listed in that list of people who can view? If it ever, if something ever came to us?
So I would say, let's not put it in there, and you could be there if you need to be, because that would be if it's investigators or attorneys related by the district.
Okay.
And we'll leave it up to them.
Hey, any other questions on this one? Okay, so we need a motion for the first reading and revision of policy EEAA. All right, I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so our next one is EHAA, Computer Security, Email and Internet Communications. This is a new policy required by law. Was this one we were given from School Board Association or?
A little bit of School Board Association and a lot of your admin team at GBS.
Woo, thank you.
Admin team.
We talked about this one a lot.
Any comments or discussion on this one?
I had a question about item nine. Any communications created and retrieved using email may be read by individual other than the intended recipient. And it just occurred to me, what about material you want to keep confidential?
Well, essentially, we're saying email is really like, the idea is that email is kind of like a postcard. You know, especially public email, that there's, there's very little that's confidential. So the idea here is letting everybody know that, you know, somebody else can read your email.
So does that mean that, say, discussion about an issue over some special ed practice could not, you couldn't discuss that over email? You'd have to have a private conversation?
There are things that we put in email, and they're to specific people. Most things would be left to a conversation, but there are definitely times where we use email. It's just to that restricted group, and then it's going to be up to, for example, me, Randy, Kristin, any of the case managers involved to make sure that that email doesn't ever go anywhere else.
Okay, so you have some procedures for email and that, and those kinds of issues. Okay.
And when we do send emails like that, we always use initials and never spell out anyone's name just in case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the first reading of policy EHAA. We need a second. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor of a first reading of policy EHAA, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, our next one is EDCA, which is, oh, these are good ones. Okay, yeah. Yeah, we get, we're in the rescinding. So we're rescinding policy EDCA and policy EGAH. I assume these have been incorporated at other places.
They have, yeah. EDCA has been incorporated into EHAA, and EGAH has been incorporated into EHB dash R, which is our records retention policy. So we don't need full policies for either of these anymore.
Okay, so we need a motion to rescind policies EDCA and EGAH.
So give it to Ed this time.
We have a motion from Ed and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and any opposed, say nay. All right, so our next agenda item is the principal's report.
The only thing that I wanted to add is we talked about policy IG E, IG E F. And in our January PB, since reading that policy, our January PB, we're going to work, we're going to have some time devoted to starting revamping our curriculum unit maps so that we can put them online because we need to be transparent with that policy. So that is on our agenda to start working on, and we, we have some that are really old. So then the other thing is that all the report cards come out on Friday. We had a couple glitches, just the learning new technology and doing something in a different way. But all in all, I think it's going to be really great.
Are, are they a different format from?
So they are. Before, we were using Power School. And now we're using Alma. So it's, it's a different process in bringing them together, but we're also sending them electronically.
Oh.
So that's exciting.
We were only getting paper.
And it's not really sending them. It's in Alma. So when a parent logs into Alma to their kids. So there's no yah, yah.
So there'll be, there'll be no paper.
No, not unless a parent specifically requests papers.
They have a tree.
We're trying.
Oh, remember. Sign it. Save me from having to remember to return that little envelope.
Those cost a lot of money.
So does the parent.
Floating around my house. Does the parent acknowledge electronically, I've seen this? Well, you can probably see if they've accessed it, but.
I honestly don't know. Because we haven't done it yet. I don't know if I can see if they've accessed it. But kind of, I feel like you could need a horse to water. I can't, you know.
Yeah.
We didn't have to acknowledge them.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I don't remember ever having to send. I was going to say, I don't remember ever having to send anything back.
Well, you were supposed to send the envelope back, but that's okay. Most people don't.
The mannequin will
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're going to throw that in the folder.
In the folder, in the folder, Brenda, the folder. The folder.
The paper, schools that do ask for knowledge, it's that, it actually made it from the backpack to the parent versus they're hiding it where in this case, parents have access to their child.
Yeah.
They can't hide it. Yeah. And they're, yes, they're on notice that it's there.
So other than that, everything as is, that's in my, in my awesome letter.
That's great. Thank you. All right. Next up is our superintendent's report.
I'm going to just submit my report as written. The one thing I was going to talk about was creating a, like more informal forum about the playground. But now that the board has selected S E group and they're kind of doing that, I wonder if we just kind of let it go with them since they're going to be doing two community nights anyway.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we can get a lot of feedback on what we, what the community is interested in doing about tennis courts and design and all the other kind of things.
I think it would be great to have them frame that conversation too, rather than us.
Yep. So I'm good.
Excellent. Any questions or comments for Sydney from the superintendent's report? Okay, um. Right. I wanted to just mention, I don't know if folks have seen and, you know, we'll continue because we have talked about, you know, the voucher stuff. We've talked about the divisive concept stuff. I don't know if folks have seen that there is a new bill being proposed that would take the divisive concepts bill a step farther. And I just want to just mention that we're going to keep our eye on that and keep aware of what that is looking to do. It would limit teachers, that teachers would not be able to, um, if they were going to teach something that portrays a negative part of our history, it needs to be done in the context of what was happening at the time in the whole world. And it's referred to as the teacher loyalty bill.
Oh, yeah.
So just, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we're aware of that one too, that's out there and we'll keep an eye on it and we'll continue to have conversations as that moves forward about what that would look like. But at this point, it's just a proposed legislation, you know, so, so folks know and so our teachers know, you know, that we're aware of that and that we're keeping our eye on those things and looking at that legislation that's coming forward. But it's, it's made some like national news. And so because we've talked about some of these other things, I just want, felt like it was important for us to acknowledge that we are aware of it and we'll be watching to see what happens with that. So, yeah, I've been waiting. Go ahead, Sydney.
I just think, Brittany, one of the things that the board should be acutely aware of is that the same group that did successfully get divisive concepts passes backing this bill.
Yeah.
And that makes it a little more concerning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. So we'll keep watch on that and, you know, what we need to do as a board to respond to that. So
And I think there was some news today about a proposal that will make it illegal to even propose a vaccine mandate.
So that's been out for a while. Yeah. And that is also, it's, that's also tied to, it would be, it would impact any kind of like tracking or registry information. So there's actually some good information from in, in the medical community right now about it because they're one of the groups that's
Yeah.
um, putting light on that. So I know in the progress monitoring committee, the medical professional folks in that group have brought that one up. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so next is our consent agenda. Does anyone have any changes, edits to the consent agenda? So we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion from Denise.
Thank you.
But I still need a second, so. I'll, I'll second it. Perfect. A second from Leslie. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Okay, we don't have a non-public session tonight. We do have a non-meeting. Our next meeting is January 4th. So we will meet again in this format, January 4th. And we will not be coming, you know, this will be the official adjournment of the meeting. We won't be coming back in so we can, you know, any folks that are, are still with us, we will adjourn the meeting for tonight, but board members, you got to stick around. So
January 4th here or Eastman?
Oh. Did we talk about that? The January meeting in here or in Eastman?
We didn't talk about it. I'm not sure what Eastman's doing with gatherings right now.
I think
I think it's still on.
Yeah.
We have a performance tomorrow night in Eastman.
Yeah.
Doors, there's one later on that's out.
I mean, Eastman's requiring masks for indoors, but
Yeah.
Yeah. I have not heard of any restrictions on meetings.
You want me to contact you about the meeting?
We haven't had an Eastman meeting since we've also had the virtual option. Do folks feel like we need to change our physical location since we have a, a way for folks to join virtually?
I don't know if we got many more people to attend because it was
Our attendance has been declining when we go there. We haven't had many people come to
It'd be easier to just stay here and have the Zoom action for people.
Yeah. 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 It's, it's more work for you guys to arrange it. So let's
I was just thinking these guys, we got to come all the way here. We got to come down here to me. I, I didn't see a huge difference in meeting in the driver's. Um, but carried away.
I can check on availability.
Kind of, it's less work for the staff.
Let's check on availability and check on let's make, um, let's see, like, let's just make sure they have, would have the technology stuff for us to be able to, because we would still have the remote access for folks. Okay, we will update on that.
Thank you.
Okay, I, other than that, I just need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay.
All second.
All right. So I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right. And any opposed, say nay. Okay. And we are adjourned at nine oh six. Thank you. See everybody in January.
So Kristen, we will have to, I was just thinking, if you're going to, I'm just thinking of access